This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles, here, Councilman Williams.
Here.
Worthy.
Here.
Eccles.
Here.
Billingsley.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Reed. We have a quorum present, our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Jeremy Ward to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we praise you today as you've given us the ability, on the knees of high orders, you've given us freedom where we can govern. Did I pray that you would give this council administration wisdom beyond man just to enrich our city, to grow us, move us in a better direction? Lord, may we just praise you in all that we do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work sessions and city council meetings held on December 2nd.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of November 28th through December 4th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of accounts.
Proclaimations, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like for Mr. Frank Eskridge and Lisa Dover to come up, please. I have a proclamation. For as the City of Gaston recognizes that the water quality of our rivers and streams affect all of us as citizens, the City of Gaston along with the surrounding cities and agencies such as Keep Etowah Beautiful, the Gaston Water Works and Sewer Board have joined in efforts to improve the water quality. The City of Gaston recognizes that one means of achieving better water quality is through the education of its citizens regarding factors that impact it. On December 12, 2014, the City of Gaston, Keep Etowah Beautiful, the Gaston Water Works and Sewer Board and several other co-sponsors will host the Annual Water Festival. The goal of this festival is to educate all 4th graders in the City of Gaston as well as Etowah County about the water quality and to encourage all citizens of the City of Gaston to become involved to help improve our water quality. The City of Gaston is committed to protecting our rivers and streams and we ask all citizens to join us in this work. As we work together, we can have a greater impact on our environment and our city. Therefore, I, Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gaston, by the virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim December 7th through December 13th, 2014, as Water Quality Awareness Week in the City of Gaston.
First of all, thank you so much. The water festivals, of course, where we bring our 4th graders in and do an educational program with them, like Mayor Gotten was talking about, is very important that we teach our children because they're our future. And without our community partners like the City of Gaston, Water Works and so many other, we could not do the job and be successful as we are. These kids absolutely love it. They come in, they go back to school and have the 3rd grade ready to come next year. They're excited, but when you give them dirt, ice cream and just let them have good old fun, you know, and they just have a wonderful time. And also, we use our high schoolers as presenters, so thank you so much for allowing us to do the job that we do with your support.
And I'd like to just very briefly reiterate our thanks. I know the Water Board is pleased to support this effort and I want to thank the city for the financial support and the time and the effort of the city personnel who participate. If, you know, not much of our jobs are fun, just fun, but this is fun. If you could, if you ever had time to come see these 4th graders, they absolutely love it and it means a lot to them, so thank you so much.
Mr. President, if I could, I'd like to go ahead and just make a quick announcement while I'm up here and then I'll have to, is that okay? We have a new person with us today and I'm going to introduce her to everybody, Ms. Deborah Gaither. Would you stand up, Ms. Deborah? She is our EMA, our new director, and she was here before when the CSEP and the incinerator and we got new sirens out around the whole county and was real valuable in doing a lot of things back then that needed to be done. And they had to move back home because of sickness in the family and now that situation has been handled and we had an opening and she applied again and the committee, it was unanimous consent to bring her back and she's real good and we're glad to have you here with us. Do excellent job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And I'd likewise seize the opportunity to say welcome to Deborah, welcome back, actually. All right. Unfinished business. I don't think we have any today. Item number nine on the agenda, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 501 Tuskegee Circle in District 1. Last known owner is Curtis McEldery. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in March of 2012, there's no improvements to the property, there are no active permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Okay.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
This is in District 1 and also I believe both of the McElderys, there's a Curtis McEldery Senior and there's a Curtis McEldery Junior, and I believe both of them are deceased and so I don't know any other family members at this time, so the property should be abated.
Mayor, Brian, would that qualify as a rehab?
That is a plan.
Okay, good.
Yeah, if you look at the pictures, it looks like it's imprinted. Okay. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 912 Maryland Avenue in District 2, Virginia Kirkland being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started our case in July of last year, there've been no improvements to the property, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Okay. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Some of these are easier than others. Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1603 McKinley Avenue in District 5, Patricia Louise Ponder and husband Jerry Wayne Ponder being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in January of this year, there've been no improvements to the property, there was a permit taken out in January, not long after the House fell under condemnation, there have been no improvements. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Okay. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
This house is in my district and I've received no information or anything from anybody as to try and help alleviate the problem, so I make a motion to abate the nuisance.
We've got two motions in one second.
Another second.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 14 Cabot Avenue in District 6, the state of Alabama, and Stacy Buchanan Delgado, with John Edward Buchanan having a life estate being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started our case in December of last year, there've been no improvements to the property, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
While the mayor's finishing up looking at this piece of property, this is in District 6 and the only way to take care of District 6 that I see is do it one bite at a time and this is a house here that I make a motion that we abate the nuisance.
Second.
Okay, so, any discussion? Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 14 is a resolution appointing a member to the Board of Education. This appoints Frank N. Kyler for a term expiring June 1st, 2019. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution?
I move to adopt this resolution of the apartment.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Not a discussion, but I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank Joe Rensaw, who is the outgoing person on the school board, even though I didn't appoint him, know him very well and thank him for his service on the Gaston City School Board.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 15 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Academy Sports and Outdoors. Academy agrees to pay $1,200 and provide other consideration and sponsorship of certain parks and recreation events in exchange for advertising. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 16 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Fish Life Collegiate Tournament. This is for sponsorship of a tournament to be held at Couso Landing on June 27th, 2015 and the amount is $2,500. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Not a discussion, but I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank Joe Rensaw, who is the outgoing person on the school board, even though I didn't appoint him, know him very well and thank him for his service on the Gaston City School Board.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 15 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Academy Sports and Outdoors. Academy agrees to pay $1,200 and provide other consideration and sponsorship of certain parks and recreation events in exchange for advertising. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 16 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Fish Life Collegiate Tournament. This is for sponsorship of a tournament to be held at Couso Landing on June 27th, 2015 and the amount is $2,500. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 17 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Tillman, Allen and Sizmore. This is for property appraisals in conjunction with right-of-way acquisition for the South 11 Street Bridge Replacement Project. This cost is $4,000 with the federal share being $3,200 and local match share of $800. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, is there any discussion?
That's in my district and it's really something that we have to do. We have to pay for the appraisal to pick this bridge up and the appraisal costs us probably more than the land is, but that's just what we have to do.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business? Okay, there's no new business. Are there any department reports, committee reports, boards? Okay, we do have a citizen's request to speak. Mr. Avery, come up. Will you state your name and address?
I'm in trouble if I have to do all of that. I'm Robert Avery, 710 Crestview Drive here in the city, to the president, to the council, to the mayor. I know you guys are going to be glad now, I only have five minutes and she just put the timer on. And I saw Billy early, so Billy, I got five minutes. I know. I'm here this morning to talk about an issue that's very, very dear to me and I shared upstairs with them briefly, but I wanted to share it with the public too because I think it's something that we need to do as a city, as a state and as a country. We need to step back and look at what's happening to us and a lot of things are happening. As I said upstairs, we had a situation out in Ferguson, Missouri, and I'm talking about policies and based on the grand jury's finding, I'm assuming that the police officer followed the policy, but we have a young man dead. We had a young man in New York who was choked to death or whatever the case may be, but because of policy, the grand jury said that it was okay for them to kill him or that was okay. I'd be willing to bet, and I'm not a gambling man, but I'd be willing to bet you that the situation in Cleveland where the 12-year-old kid was shot to death, that officer's going to be found okay because of the policy. I don't have a problem with policies, but I have a problem with people who don't have compassion and don't have common sense. The young man in Ferguson stole some cigars and he got the death penalty. The gentleman in New York was selling cigarettes, he got the death penalty. And the young boy in Cleveland was just playing, he got the death penalty because of policies. The housing authority have policies and sometimes we need to review our policies, as a matter of fact, all the time, we need to review our policies. And we need to have some common sense and a heart when it comes down to dealing with peoples. Policies are good and I want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. East because he did a heck of a job when he came in and he made public housing a place that people want to go, but because of their policies, people can't go there anymore. They got over 1,600 people on the banned list who can't come into public housing, 1,600 people. And that's crazy. That means that just about everybody in this town have a family member or friend that's on that banned list and if that person is caught in your house, then you can get banned. And the sad part about that is if I move into public houses today and if I don't go down there and check that list with all those 1,600 names on it and Derrick Williams' name is on there and I didn't see it and he come to my house to visit me, I can get put out because it's my responsibility to check that list according to the policy. I hope you see where I'm going about policies. It's good to have policies, but sometimes it's good to have common sense. And I'm hoping that in this season where we have celebrating Christ's birthday and the joyful season of giving, that people would have the courtesy, no matter what your policy is, you should have the common sense and the courtesy not to put a family out at Christmas time, of all times, particularly a lady and her child. We ran into this situation, I tried to resolve it, but because of the policy, they're going to put this young lady and her child out here at Christmas. I didn't want to come to this forum, but the mayor makes the appointments to that board and I've asked him upstairs and I'm asking him again publicly, Mayor, whenever you appoint someone to that board, make sure that person understands the policy, but make sure they also have a heart. Because a simple heart would have saved this young lady and her son from being put out right here at Christmas time. And believe it or not, I'm through because I got through before my five minutes is over with it. See, y'all should have instituted that when I was on the council, I could get through pretty quick. Again, thank you for letting me come and speak.
All right. Now for remarks by the mayor and the council. Mayor, I'll let you go first.
I'm good, thank you.
Councilperson Toles, I should say.
What I'd like to talk about is a very kept secret in the City of Gaston and that's at Nakalula Falls. Everybody knew about Nakalula Falls, but I was taking on a wellness walk, two and a half miles. Mr. Watley had me walking all over, all over those trails, but it's, when you go up there and you walk in that area, you really think you're in the Smokies. There's also an area that needs to be developed, but I'm encouraging, you know, I said last week, there's a lot to do in Gaston. They even have two cabins up there on the falls, not on the falls, but back in the wilderness area. There's some, I even had some gentlemen say that they wasn't going to wa, I did the auxiliary trails and there's the Black Creek Trail, but I'm encouraging you all to check out Nakalula Falls and also back in the wilderness area. They have mountain bike riders, I saw a mountain bike rider, I believe Heather Newshusband is a big mountain bike rider and also the Gaston runner. So if you want to lose any weight, and there's a lot of you out there, just go up on the falls and walk around, it's all the wilderness trail. Thank you.
Mr. Eccles?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy? Okay. Councilman Billingsley?
Yes. Monday night I attended a Gaston Christmas parade and it was a very, very cold night out there, but it was a good parade, it was a bit long, it had a lot of cars and wreckers in it, I didn't realize that, but the grandchildren enjoyed it and I think the City of Gaston put on a good show that night. That's all I got.
Councilman Kennedy?
Councilwoman Toles, I couldn't really let that go, what you said about, I'm thinking that what you said was a lot of fat people here, is that correct?
I did.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure you weren't talking about me. Because, you know, I just want to bring that to attention. Must be talking about the rest of these guys up there. Anyway, I just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas this year and to the people that broke into the boxing club, to the boxing people's stuff this last week, I hope you get what comes deserves to you because those kids over there needed all that stuff that was lost, there was no reason to do that. I know it's Christmas time, you could have went anywhere else and somebody could have helped you. Please don't take it on yourself, try to hurt kids and take something they've got away from them. These kids and these people that runs that organization, they didn't deserve what y'all did to them and I hope the police chief and everybody's working on trying to find out who did this and I just hope you get what's coming to you. That's all I got.
Councilman Reed?
Yeah, I just have two announcements. Louis Fuller from the Theater of Gaston out the Ritz Theater in Alabama City asked me to remind everybody about the good old-fashioned country Christmas showing. It's going to be Friday and Saturday night at 7:30 and I believe he said Sunday it's a matinee at, is that a matinee at 2:30 in the afternoon? Good, okay. That's what he said, so if you've never been to one of those performances, go and especially here at Christmas because they put on quite a show and I know you'll enjoy it. Again, that's Friday and Saturday at 7:30 PM and Sunday at 2:30. And the other one is tomorrow night at the old Alabama City Fire Hall in Alabama City next to the old library, they're on the corner of 27th to Wall Street and Megan Boulevard. The Alabama City Historical Association will have a Christmas party. It's open to the public and it starts at 5 and ends at 7. For y'all, the people that don't know, that went to Emerson, we have a complete showing of Emerson High School, Forest, General Forest, the Cone Mill, Republic Steel, downtown Alabama City and the Mill Village. So it's a whole lot to see and we'll have finger food, we'll have all of us there taking you through and I think you'll really enjoy it. Just come out tomorrow night from 5 to 7. Appreciate it.
Okay. So I do want to take the opportunity to recognize a couple of guests that we have here. I think we have some Job Corps students here today, if I'm not mistaken. Just raise your hands so people can, all right? We hope you've learned something today and we haven't turned you off from attending in the future, so we appreciate you guys being here today. We had a very informative couple of meetings today before the pre-council meeting. We had Fred Singleton, of course, to come up and talk to us about the airport authority and all the good things that are happening out there and if you haven't done so in the past, take the opportunity to educate yourself about what goes on out there and about what that means to us from an economic development standpoint. That's a, that's a great opportunity, it's a great tool for the city to draw activity here. Mike McCain also came out and presented some information and again, he gave us some very positive feedback. You know, it's very easy for people who don't take the time to really educate themselves on what's going on in terms of industrial recruitment to draw the conclusion that, oh, we haven't landed a big fish in a while, so there's nothing going on. But the reality is we have a great deal of activity going on here in terms of industrial development and we're nipping away at it, 500, 100, 200 jobs at a time and it's making a meaningful impact here. We also are working very diligently to prepare ourselves for the medium-sized or big fish that may, that may present itself going forward. Available land is a big imperative. Available land is a big impediment for us in terms of, but we are working. We have about, I think it's 300 acres that's available right now and 500 that are available going forward that, you know, that we will have ready for industrial development. So that's going to put us in a very good position to draw some of those projects that are out there. You've heard us say often, skilled labor continues to be a big challenge for us when we're competing for some of these projects. It's important that we get our young people interested in some of these high-tech and math and science-oriented fields so that they'll be ready to draw those middle-range and medium-income jobs. If you're not looking in that direction, then you're going to be challenged to be competitive in tomorrow's economy. So again, that continues to be something that we're faced with as a city. And then, of course, you know, people sometimes forget that there is a cash or financial incentives element to industrial recruiting, and we have to partner with the state when these projects reach a certain level. And again, you really should help, take the time to educate yourself on why it is that Alabama struggles currently to be competitive in that arena. It's because we've limited ourselves. We're one of two states left in the Union that has a budget that's split. You have a general fund budget and an education trust fund, or an education budget, and that limits some of the things that you can do in terms of creating monies to draw industries or to push financial incentives. So it's important to educate yourself about those kinds of things as you're voting, as you're deciding who you're going to support from a political standpoint, and as you're deciding what to advocate for. So again, just be mindful of those things and continue to educate yourself as relates to that entire process. The last thing I wanted to mention is I will be asking the Public Safety Committee and the Community Development Committee to conduct a joint meeting to discuss in light of some of the things that have happened here recently with police cases and police misconduct allegations and things of that nature, to talk about opportunities for the city to improve and review its policies. You know, there are only, there are a couple of things that I'll be presenting, and I'll highlight five points that I'll ask these two committees to address and bring up. You know, one thing, of course, is our body cameras. I think the chief has, and the police department has done a great job in terms of working to develop policies that drive the use of and the follow-through in terms of the use of that equipment, but I'd like for us to discuss that openly to make sure there aren't any opportunities for us to improve. Community policing model, I really like the chief. I can remember when he first stepped into his role, there was a great deal of activity in terms of the community policing model, and I'd like us to maybe consider revisiting that at some level, a review of the deadly force policies. You know, we may in fact be okay, but again, I think it's worth, in this season, it's worth reviewing to make sure that we're in line with where we need to be. Again, maybe it's more dialogue than anything, but I think anytime you have a police-related misconduct issue, that there ought to be a special prosecutor. I think we're seeing across this nation that there is an absence of talent and maybe even an absence of passion as it relates to some of these cases. Who knows what would have happened had these cases gone before a jury, but because there was no indictment, we'll never know. So that's something that I would really like us to look at, if there's any legal recourse in terms of being able to assign special prosecutors for these cases to take some of the politics out of it. I'd love to see us go in that direction. And then, of course, Mr. Avery mentioned it before, citizen review boards or councils or committees. That's something that's come up over the years time and time again. May be an opportunity to revisit that. So those are just suggestions. Again, I'll be asking those two committees to come together and have a joint meeting and discuss those items. I will say this, and I don't mind saying this publicly. I have a number, a number of friends that are police officers, and I, you know, I hold those guys near and dear to my heart. They go out and they perform a very dangerous and a very challenging responsibility every day, and so it's important that we remember that that's not an easy job. That's why not everybody does it. It's not an easy job, but at the same time, I think we have a responsibility as elected officials to our citizens to look at these things, to make sure that if there are opportunities to improve, that we do so. Okay? All right, if there's nothing else, I make a motion, I'm sorry, entertain a motion that we adjourned?
So moved. Second.